May I join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion.
Here.
Brainerhorst, here. Banstrak.
Yes.
Seba.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spore.
Here.
All right, for those of you that might be attending by telephone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during our dedicated public forums. I would ask you, please keep the microphones and telephones on mute until the time at which you would like to speak. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Banstrak, Hopkins, Zane, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstrak.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Seba.
Yes.
At this time, anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item? If you want to do that, please come forward, state your name and address, try to limit your comments to three minutes. All right, moving on, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move.
Support.
Deion, Brainerhorst, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Banstrak.
Yes.
Seba. Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution. Resolution number six-three-six-zero entitled Resolution Approving the Street Finance Report for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2021. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those following at home. I'm on slide number two this evening. As Mayor DuPont stated, what we're entertaining tonight is approval of our annual street finance reports. And this report does have some significance for the city of Pella. It's important to note that it is a state requirement that we file this report on an annual basis. And the key thing, reason why, is in order to receive road use tax funds and roughly offhand, we can give you about $1,560,000 reasons why we should be filing that. That's the annual revenue we receive from the state of Iowa for road use tax on this. And one of the requirements is the report that we are considering this evening. So overall, big picture highlights, it's a little bit deceiving this year, and I want to stress, not deceiving, but I would stress that the financial report is subject to timing differences in what we have at play here this evening. One of the items to note, as we said, annual road use tax revenues are right in the neighborhood of $1,560,000. We did have some unused bond proceeds that we had for this year that skewed the revenue total to just over $3.7 million this year. Annual expenditures in total were just over $2.3 million, which led, that's the fund balance of $2.7 million. And please keep in mind, those unused bond proceeds are projects that will be taking place in this current fiscal year. So next year, when we file the report, what you're likely to see is a drawdown, a significant drawdown on fund balance, but just please keep in mind that it is subject to timing differences between the two fiscal years. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of the street finance report for the fiscal year ended, that would be June 30th of 2021. And we'd be more than happy to answer your questions, either the mayor or the council would have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brainerhorst, Hopkins, discussion, questions? I know we had a lot, a lot more detail in our packet about everything. Are there any questions anybody has? So how is that revenue calculated?
Based off, Corey, do you want to answer that question?
It's on a per capita basis. So we receive those funds from the state on a per capita basis.
So just the whole state is divided up by?
Everybody, yeah, every entity receives their per capita amount. I think it's $95 or roughly that per capita.
All right. All in favor of approving the resolution, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Banstrak.
Yes.
Seba.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance number one-zero-zero-two. Ordinance number one-zero-zero-two entitled in ordinance amending municipal telecommunications, telecommunication utility rates in the city of Pella, Iowa. This is the first reading, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for brief presentation on this item. As Mayor DuPont stated, what we're talking about this evening, what this ordinance would do would improve the city's telecommunications rates for Pella fiber. And a few of the highlights really, when we talk about the highlights of the ordinance, we're talking about the new items that they've added with this particular ordinance. What we've added as far as internet ease are concerned, we have a special rate that is for tax exempt organizations to qualify for the rates that you see up here on the big board. What we have, the organization must be exempt from federal income tax that we have. And so generally speaking, what these rates are, $75 per month, 125 for 300 megabits, and $300 for a gig. Just in comparison, the gig price for a commercial service is $500 per month. And then as far as the phone voice services, it's just an add-in, those match our commercial rates that we do have for Pella fiber as well. And as we stated, to be, to qualify for the tax exempt rates, you have to be exempt from federal income taxes on it as well. So it's a whole new category that we have as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the big addition here, we do have a finalization of the city cable rates that we have, and this is in cable television rates that we have. And as with the previous example, with the road use tax fund, there's a considerable amount of detail that was included in the council package. The listed up here on the big board is just an overall highlight of our rates that we do have here for cable television services as well. And Mandy, let's go ahead, please. And we also have the hospitality rates that we have for a few of our networks that we do have for Pella fiber TV as well. And Mandy, is that the end of it?
One more.
Okay, one more. Yeah, we wanted to make sure we cover some of these stuff, and marketing director would be pushing me if I forgot to cover these items that we have right here. It's important to note that for those customers, and we do have a number of customers that do have multiple services with the city of, with Pella fiber, we are also approving a $10 per service discount on that as well with the, with the city services. And then just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, we have here is really for those unusual accounts, or accounts that's really geared towards, that the city would have significant installation cost with. We do have the right to offer contract rates to those customers or those unusual cases that we have. But by and large, with Pella fiber, we want to state, there's no fine print, there's no contracts, there's no data limits for all our customers. What you see is what you get with our rates up here that we've listed up here on the big board. And as we said, there's a considerable amount of detail included in your packet. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation this evening. We'd be more than happy to explain any of these items that we have. But once again, what this ordinance does is approves the rates for Pella fiber.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
I move.
Deion, Spore, discussion, questions?
Do you have an estimate of how many accounts might be over 10 gig?
Not many offhand. We're aware of one customer at this time that that would be in that range.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Deion.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Banstrak.
Yes.
Seba.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Well, let's see, we are to our abstract.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, before we move on from this item, we do have a number of customers with Pella fiber, including tax exempt organizations that are anxious for our service. And in the consideration of this item, we would request waiver in the second and third readings of the ordinance for council's consideration.
Okay, Skiba, Hopkins, motion moved second to waive the second, third reading. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Seba.
Yes.
Hopkins. Spore.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Banstrak.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Support.
Skiba, Brainerhorst, motion to move to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Seba. Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Banstrak.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, moving on to abstract bills number two-zero-nine-one. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve. And if you want.
Brainerhorst.
Support.
Deion, questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Banstrak.
Yes.
Seba. Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business that needs to be addressed this evening? All right, hearing none, any member of the public have any business you would like to bring before the council tonight on any subject? If so, please state your name, address, try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Erickson. I live at 506 Bruce Drive, looking for work too. First of all, I want to thank all the city council members for serving. I have a couple of considerations I wanted to share with the council and the general public for attendance tonight. But first, a little background about myself. I lived in Pella between the ages of about two and 19. My mother's originally from Pella, as were her parents. In 2018, shortly after beginning my own family, my wife and I decided to relocate ourselves back to Pella so we could have a strong support network close to us, a community with a strong sense of values, and an outstanding school system. Growing up in Pella, my friends and I and many others would often complain that there was nothing to do. There was only a handful of restaurants, and at the time, the old roller rink and bowling alley were basically defunct. Backyard baseball and playing in the creek near Big Rock Park were two of the main activities that we did to occupy ourselves. Today, I look at all the progress and development that has been made in Pella. It's wonderful to have more places to eat, more places to shop at, more recreational things to do, and parks to play at. But people still want more. I say that we have it pretty good. My wish is to see thoughtful continued growth, but not at the expense of our taxpayers. I'm thrilled that we just passed the city bond issue and that it did not increase our taxes. But before I voted yes, I wondered to myself, when will they come asking for more money? When will local option sales tax be brought forth? And this is something I want to make sure that stays off the table. I'm not opposed to the new community rec center, but I do think it would be a duplication of services that we currently have at a time when there are other pressing issues that demand our attention, such as road and sewer repairs and fixing and updating our current community center. That said, I love the idea of expanding the university street and bike path up to the new sports park, and would love to see this phase of the project move forward. Growing up, we used to have open gym at the high school on Saturday mornings and basketball tournaments at Central College's fieldhouse. Currently, there's about three or four gyms in Pella, if you count Pella Rec Center or PCD, Anytime Fitness, CrossFit Pella, and Central's Fieldhouse Weight Room. Yes, they all require a membership, but I believe the proposed facility would as well. I also share some of the previously mentioned concerns about staffing for the proposed facility. I was wondering, has it been discussed what would happen with the current indoor pool once the new one is completed? I want to see our city focus on taking care of the citizens that we have first before worrying about adding more. I also care about maintaining Pella's authenticity and small-town feel, which is itself a main attraction. People also come to Pella for the values and sense of community. We need to focus on the repairs to infrastructure and then housing availability along with the cost of living before we build up more amenities to attract newcomers. In the season of Thanksgiving, let's be thankful for what we have and patience so that we don't increase our debt too rapidly. Let's use what we have while focusing on the issues that demand our attention and wait to build the things that are simply ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? All right, then we are going to adjourn the regular meeting to several policy and planning items that we need to discuss. So are we going in the order that's in our, on our list here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so first thing, we'll talk about, oppose amendment to the South Main Development Agreement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor DuPont stated, purpose of this session is to discuss a proposed amendment. And it is important to note that this request did come to us this evening from the developers of the South Main Development that is located in the former Webster School site. Now specifically, when we talk about the amendment this evening, this pertains to the future phase or phase two of the development that we have this evening. And I would also just like to state as an overview and consideration of this amendment, really it's being driven by housing and market conditions in our city as well. Now specifically, what is being proposed for phase two is the developers proposing to build six new single-family attached homes. And so when we talk about single-family attached, those would be two single-family homes that are literally attached, we call it single families. So when we talk about six new homes, we're talking about three new buildings on the site. And just to give an overview of this, when we look at this, the former Webster School site that we have right here, these three buildings are currently built. What we're looking at is three additional new buildings that the developers are proposing on the site here, and these would be the single-family attached homes that we have right here. Now in addition, as far as the timeline on the project, the city's original, the current development agreement states, the developers have until October 31st of 2022 to complete phase two of the development. They have requested a 14-month extension until December of 2023 as well. So we have two items that we have actually a little bit more, but those are the big overview from the city's perspective. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now as far as background on this, it's always a good idea anytime you talk about the South Main Development because this was a very significant development for the city of Pella. But I also think it's very important to understand the reasons for the amendment and also where we really started at when we look at this, when we got involved with South Main. Now as background on this, the South Main Development, you may hear some of this terminology, and just to explain what each one is, but they're interchangeable, oftentimes they do get interchanged. Originally, we set up the Webster Park Urban Renewal Plan, and when you look at the Webster Park Urban Renewal Plan that we have here, and the plan that the city designed for it, it's this area that's really, it has the diagonal lines extended through it. So we've started down here at the southern border with UT Street, the northern border is just north of Independence Street over here. We have Main Street over here and Broadway Street over here as well. But it's this diagonal, diagonal lines that we went through. Now ultimately, when we look at this item, and we're showing a couple pictures of two of the main properties on this area that we had back when we started with the South Main Development, we had the former Webster School site that was on the site, and then we also had three houses that were located just north of Independence Street. The yellow house that we have, or we officially called the yellow house, as council is aware, we did have numerous issues and concerns with at the city's standpoint, from the code enforcement standpoint. So when we were planning the South Main Development, as far as urban renewal area and coming up with a plan to work with private development to redevelop this area, one of the things that we did is part of this, is we looked at really the overall purpose of this development. And what we're hoping to do when we approve the South Main Development, we hope, we're hoping to promote, provide redevelopment opportunities and also incentives that promote light remediation. So that's a key point when we talk about the South Main Development to keep in mind as we consider a nice amendment. And then we're also hoping to enhance economic development through our community. When you look at this development, it's close proximity to the downtown. We thought it had potential back in the time, even with the Webster School on the site and the residential houses that were in need of attention up to the north of the property. And one of the things that we did that separates the South Main District from other urban renewal areas that we have in the city of Pella is at the time, we hired a consultant to look at this area. And the consultant looked at these two properties, when you look at, consider blighted property, that would be the Webster School property and the yellow house up there. And ultimately, when you look at those two properties and they noted, they felt that those two properties constituted blight under Iowa law. And they also stated, when you look at this diagonal area of our urban renewal plan, approximately 75% of the entire district was blighted under Iowa law. And that's a key terminology to keep in mind. So when it closely ties in again, what the goal of the plan was to promote redevelopment opportunities and promote light remediation through economic development and redevelopment. So let's go ahead, please, Corey. And one of the other things that goes without saying, why this is important, why we always look for redevelopment opportunities, is when you look at developments such as this, even though you may have buildings and old facilities there, the key thing is oftentimes these sites have adequate public infrastructure to support new development as well. So that's another item to please keep in mind as we consider the site. So with that in mind, with the urban renewal area, after we promoted, which is the overall plan for the development back in 2018, we also worked with the South Main developers, and we actually approved a development agreement in 2018. Now what the change was, is all development agreements, there's a negotiation process involved with it. What we approved at the time was the South Main Housing Development, and you can see a picture that we have down here in the lower corner of here, and it had two phases. Ultimately, at the time, it was for 42 housing units. And roughly, if you were to work the math backwards on minimum tax assessments, it was about a $16.5 million project at the time. What the city agreed to, and looking at the complexity of the property, and again, when you look back in time, and you consider what was at time, you had the Webster School site that was on site, you also had the yellow house area on there. And so it was kind of from a developer's standpoint, it was a complicated development as well. What we did was we looked over a 20-year period of time, and we agreed to property tax rebates to the developer. So what that means is property tax rebates with, through the TIF rates, we were able to capture the incremental value on the property, and those incremental values, we're able to rebate back to the developers to perform this redevelopment. Now, when we throw out, not throw out, but when we talk about the key terms of the terminology right here, what we estimated on a $16.5 million development on there, when you look at the minimum tax assessments the developer agreed to, we thought over a 20-year period of time, it'd be about $6.1 million. We're talking about future property taxes paid by new buildings on site. Keep in mind, this particular development agreement was just for the Webster School site, and I may be a little bit off on these dates, but I believe the property was acquired by the Pella Community School District in the mid-1950s. And then sometime in the early 2000s, it was transferred over to Central College. It was used as their maintenance facility on site. So from the city's standpoint, the property had not been paying property taxes since before the 1950s on the site when it was owned by the Pella Community School District. So from our standpoint, the property tax rebates, again, you're talking about property taxes on new buildings that we had, and that was the exchange with the developer. The developer also agreed for minimum taxable valuation on the project of just over $9 million after the rollback. If you did it on a gross basis, it'd be about $16.5 million. And also, please keep in mind, the increase in the valuations about a percent and a half. So from the city's standpoint, how we looked at it at the time, we looked at it as currently that property had an old school district on site. This was a chance to get a quality, high-end housing development that was close to our downtown. We also thought that it would not only help eliminate blight in the area, could spur additional development in the area. So we were very excited about the project as well. From our standpoint, property had not been generating property taxes to the city of Pella on this, and the property tax rebates that we had is with the 42 housing units, we thought that we could serve the development with the existing infrastructure that we had in place, and also with the existing staff in there, and that it would not trigger in the foreseeable future any type of property tax increases in looking at this arrangement. So from our standpoint, the, really, when you talk about the minimum tax valuations, that was really a period, and it was really on the developers, and that actually came from the developers as far as establishing the minimum tax valuations because they had a vested interest in the property tax rebates for the property on it. But that's a little bit about the history of how the South Main Development came about. So as we consider it, it's always important to have a good base understanding as we consider why the developers are proposing what they're doing this evening. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please, and talk about this. Now to date, phase one for the project has been completed. Phase one is approximately 18 housing units, and I would say they're very, it's a very nice development in our community. And I would go so far as to say that this is really a showcase attraction for Southeast Iowa, not the state of Iowa, to be honest with you. And as we stated, originally, phase two had 24 housing units that included two-story condos as well. But subsequently, to 2018, and keep in mind of the eyes of the developer who's building these things, that building the housing units, the developer has to worry about what the market will bear and what the market is demanding. And that's one of the items that we're, is under consideration this evening. They've approached the city, and what they've informed us is subsequently, since 2018, there's been a number of housing developments that have been constructed in Pella. And what they're hearing, and we do have a principal from South Main here this evening, what they're hearing about is the housing that is being demanded on site is the single-family residential attached units that we're talking about tonight. This is the housing units that they think that they can build and actually sell on there, on the property as well. And so what they've informed us is the market is somewhat changed since 2018. Part of that is just due to what the consumer demands are. Part of it's due to the new housing that's been constructed in the city of Pella on it as well. So what we have here, as far as just a quick summary of what the developer is proposing, again, we started off with 42 housing units. What's being proposed is 24, and most of that reduction is in the phase two development, which is being driven by market considerations. They're asking for roughly a 14-month extension to complete the project, so phase two would be completed by December 2023. Now as far as the minimum assessment is concerned on the project, it is important to note they are requesting a reduction in the minimum assessments, going from $3.8 million down to $2.6 million. From the city of Pella's standpoint, how this would impact the community, and roughly the math that we have on this, the $1.2 million reduction, what that amounts to with the property on there is we would receive what we would receive on the property because we have the urban renewal. So Pella Community School District on the property taxes, Marion County and the city of Pella would receive our debt service levies for the property. If you look at the debt service levy rates for the community and take it back to $1.29, and Corey correct me if I'm wrong, it's about $5,000 per year is what would be the reduction to all three entities combined on it. So from our standpoint, the minimum tax assessments, not material from our standpoint on this, the way we look at it, but we just make sure that we wanted to explain that item and how it would actually impact under the terms of the development agreement over the next 20 years for the city. So again, that would be on an annual basis, but most of this would be the property owners and the negotiations with the developers and the people buying the future phases of the single-family attached on it as well. Mandy, if we could go ahead, please? Now, we want to also explain what was previously approved, and this gets a little bit confusing on it. What we've chosen to show is what was actually previously approved for the planned unit development. So this is the zoning aspect of things. What you see is the color renditions or the color elevations of the proposed new buildings. So these would be the three, three new buildings on site. Council's already looked at this new building right here for the planned unit development, and it's this building right here, and that's what was approved. Developers are proposing to construct two identical buildings similar to what was previously approved for the planned unit development. So when we, last time we revised the planned unit development, this was the current lot layout that we have here. Both the developers, instead of one long building that had two-story condos in it, what the developers are proposing now is two additional single-family attached units that we have here is the difference from the planned unit development to what they're proposing now. So before we go on, is there any questions as far as the layout or the color elevations with what is being proposed with the single-family attached homes?
When did we approve that amendment that had the two-story condos? Because I was trying to find that quickly, but it wasn't that long ago.
No.
On its September? Yeah, I think so.
Right, that sounds about right.
Has the Catholic Church been informed of the, of what's going on?
As far as that, I'm not sure of. As far as the initial communication with the property owners on it, if it was been discussed. Yeah.
What will be the valuation of that property, the complete property now with this change?
Andy, if we could go back, I believe this slide here, we're right at looking at the answer. I think we had originally, yeah, here we go, right around just over nine points, just about nine point one million dollars after the rollback. So it was about a sixteen and a half million dollar project. If we make this change.
It wasn't that way it was initially, Michael, it was sixty million?
Yes.
So you're saying that it's going to be about sixteen million now?
Well, that's probably a good question for the developers to answer. But how it impacts as far as the tax and what's being agreed to the agreement? What we agreed to originally with the current agreement, this was based on a nine point one taxable valuation assessment. When you look at the current rollback or the rollback at the time, that equated to a sixteen and a half million dollar gross valuation. Doing this or reducing it by about one point two million dollars. So if we approve this change, we'd go from a nine point one million dollar minimum tax assessment after the rollback to about seven point nine on that.
I guess, I guess my point is that we're looking at this and the city was, and the community was looking at sixteen point one million dollars coming on our tax rolls. And that's what we gave a six point one million dollar tip for.
Yes.
Is the TIF going to go down appropriate, the same percentage?
Yeah, the TIF, what will happen here is because the minimum assessment is going down, so the property taxes will go down to the developers. Keep in mind, with the developers, they only get TIF tax increment financing rebates if the city receives property taxes from, from the development. So by the minimum assessment going down, the developers will be receiving less on an annual basis.
On an annual basis, where they make the six point one over twenty years?
That would be a financial, that would be a financial calculation. It depends when the, when the units come on, on it, so.
I guess that's where I got a little bit of a problem with it, we're going down eighteen units. And our TIF is the same amount, six point one million. There's a big difference between sixteen point one and whatever it'll end up now.
Brandon, can you fill us in on that number? What the gross, gross valuation will be with these three additional units and what's already there?
Sure. Do you need me to think in the mic or?
Oh, you can just talk from there.
Okay. Yeah, so for phase one, I'm going to answer a couple of questions. For phase one, we had a minimum assessment value of five point two million approximately after rollback. That's our minimum assessed value. Our sales are actually over the minimum assessed value. So we've, we've, we've closed and sold homes over and above the minimum value. For phase two, this price is accurate. I do believe, again, we'll be over these numbers. Again, it's a minimum assessment number, to be fair to the homeowners. So if they're buying it at our purchase price, they're paying, they're paying their reasonable taxes based on the purchase price like any other assessed home in Pella or Marion County. However, most folks have had upgrades over and above those costs. So I would see this number being higher at the end of the day with Marion County. I'd also like to add that twenty-four homes and families taxes and what those taxes serve is a lot different than six families at a very similar value. So from the school district and roads and other infrastructure, six families for almost an equal, well, a third value discount is, the math really favors that. That's real to decide, but really, again, I just would add, it's really a supply and demand thing for us. The project has taken longer than we ever wanted during the pandemic and some of the cost increases and material shortages that we've seen. And as we looked at the previously approved condo, we love that. We spent lots of money designing it. We have a fully permitted set of drawings, a ready-to-permit set of drawings that the developers have paid for that we can't use. And really, it just became an issue of what the community wants, what's been added over the last couple of years in different parts of the town for the housing that was originally supposed to go on that condo and the lack of demand. So I think on the twenty-year term, what we're, what we're willing to risk is that if we do not get the minimum assessed value to the six point one, then that rebate will not meet six point one. But if we overshoot our minimum and we do get to that, then I think that was the hope that we met the objectives of the development agreement.
Either way, it was based on, it's not a fair evaluation of us as council members back in twenty eighteen. You know, what was, what was offered and what was sold for the six point one million dollar TIF. It's not the same now. That's where, that's where I got a little bit of a problem.
Sure.
Anyway.
Did you, you didn't tell me the number though. What's the gross valuation about? When you got all the project, all of the units bought, what is the gross valuation?
Contract, it's hard to say, Don, because contracts today would show that it's closer to fifteen million. But likely there's units that haven't closed, they're still going through the upgrade process and customization. So I believe at the end of the day, all homes sold will be very close to the sixteen and a half million that we projected, within a few percent.
So eighteen, eighteen units and you're still going to be about the same?
Yeah, the home prices are.
Subtracting eighteen units.
Yes. The units originally planned were around eight hundred square foot, a lifestyle homes. And in the larger metro, those are very popular. But unfortunately here in Pella, that's just not a desirable home. And instead of investing and spending that and having, you know, empty, empty rooms in a great part of town, we're fortunate that we have buyers that are very interested in this project, have density, have value, great homes. And so that's, that's kind of where we'd love to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many units are we losing from the August approval to now?
That is sixteen, I believe.
Four to six.
Over at sixteen, oh two, it was eighteen to six, so we'll have twelve.
I guess I'm a little surprised. I could get the eighteen to, you know, two thousand and eighteen to now, you know, everything changed. What, what changed from August to now?
Primarily cost of construction and what's sellable in Pella. So as you've seen during.
Three months?
We've been going through the pricing exercise, we've explored a lot of scenarios. We've discussed not moving forward with phase two at all. Honestly, like it was close to just grass and leave it be. The, the project has incurred significant losses. And obviously we haven't set up the agreement, but openly, it's the only way to make the project go that's somewhat feasible on a financial level to proceed.
And really what changed the, from August, to your point, was buyers that are interested, that came and approached us and said, if you can build this, we're interested in coming to the development. And that was what gave us the confidence to proceed and actually do the phase two, was because we've got over half the units already sold in phase two, or at least committed to. So there was that confidence that gave us the confidence to go ahead and say, okay, if we've got that much interest in this product, then we can go ahead and build out phase two and get the development closed up and meet the, meet the demands of the community.
Well, I understand that standard, but I'm just looking back in light of the community and what the community was sold back in twenty eighteen, where we approved six point one million dollars in a TIF. That's where I'm having a little heartburn because that's not what we are getting now.
Correct, but the TIF that's going to come back is going to be adjusted for any adjustment into the minimum assessed value. So actually, the, the money that the families invested is going to get a lower yield because we had to put that money into the project upfront, assuming we're going to get six point one million back. And we likely are not going to get that six point one million back. So we're going to get a lower return overall from a family investment perspective in addition to the losses that we have incurred on the project.
Property values keep going up, you'll get your six point one. It would surprise me in twenty years, you didn't get that back. And just, that's my own heartburn. You know, it seems like, and then now it was changed from September, August, September, I mean. Really? But anyhow, thank you.
Look back to the August proposal, did you have people commit? You thought you had people would commit to that particular style or not? Or was that just a trial and error and it didn't work? Would that be a fair statement?
Can you repeat the question?
Well, back to what we approved in August for that amendment, you know, with the proposal that had the two, what were they, two-story condos, that, that one block of those? No interest in those, and that's why you're moving to this? Or you had to that, that one that was over on, on the side there?
Yeah, I would say there was interest in the style of home, but not at the price point that we're taking to sell the units.
What was, may I ask what the price point was on those condos, those two-story ones?
In our original models, we were two hundred and seventy to two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. And so we were over four hundred thousand dollars in some cases for a fourteen hundred square foot condo.
Yeah, I would have liked that.
It's about where those houses are going for, not used to dump.
Okay, anything else?
I think if we, if we, would you be able to do one of those projections, you know, on the, the TIF? You know, the, to come when we look at this from an oriented standpoint?
Yeah, we'd be happy to add the, the financial sense of. I'd just like, I would say, the questions that have been raised tonight are valid questions on it. But Mandy, if you could go back to my first couple, or the first couple of slides that we had on this, please. In fact, go back to the first slide if you could. Yeah. Keep in mind, we had two components on this. We had the housing units that we needed at the time, that was in two thousand and eighteen. But the other issue here is we had a light issue on the site. So this project had a dual goal on it, it always has had a dual goal. We wanted additional housing, we wanted a quality development, we wanted to eliminate light. Now, granted, council's going to have to come to determination on, on this request and what's appropriate under the circumstances. But I can't underscore it enough, when we looked at this project back in two thousand and eighteen, you frankly, you had three acres in the center of town, or we did, that was deemed as a blighted property. And we've had the developers step up, remove an old school, build us a quality housing development. Now, when we got into this, they've always shown, Mandy, if you could go back to that building that we had under the PED, there's always been some sort of building and condos associated. And those have always just been concepts on it. And I think it was understanding, I mean, at least from the staff's standpoint, we've always known that this was somewhat of a fluid discussion with the developers. And the overall concept was to bring equality development to the city of Pella. I personally think with the three new single-family attached homes, we're going to get equality development in the city of Pella. But again, we want to recognize these points are legitimate questions on housing. But I also want to stress in this development, it wasn't just about housing, it was also about light remediation. So please keep that in mind as we consider the developers' requests.
And you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, I really like the new, new one. I think it gives us a much greater green space, which is completely important in the center of a community. And so from strictly aesthetics, I really like this change. I, I think it's very inviting and it just gives a whole different dimension to this. And from a quality of life standpoint, green space is quite important.
Definitely less congested.
Yes, yes.
And the demand is there, right?
Yeah. They can walk dogs in.
Exactly.
A dog park.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Don't go crazy, mister.
All right, anything else? All right, let's move on to item number two, Mike.
Okay. Yes, sir. And for those following at home, I'm on slide number thirteen this evening. What we have this evening is a request from RDP Holdings. And specifically, it's a development agreement assignment. And overall, the agreement that we would be approving or considering would be a development agreement assignment. A little bit of background on this, when we talk about assigning development agreement interest by RDP this evening, the development that we're talking about is the Prairie Ridge Commercial Development. This is the future home for Smash Park. That's the regional entertainment center that is being constructed right now in the western portion of our community. Now, the specific assignment that RDP is requesting is to assign their interests and obligations under the development agreement for lot one, that's the Smash Park lot, to Pella Entertainment Group. And primary principles for the Pella Entertainment Group would be Dr. Luke Ballinger, who's a Pella native, has experienced, has significant amount of experience in our community, and Brian Siddle, I believe I pronounced that right, that name always kind of gets mixed up. But those would be the two principles on this. Now, specifically, as we consider this, it's important to understand what development agreements have. And the South and the Prairie Ridge Development Agreement is, is not different than any other development agreement that we have. Usually, there's a standard clause in all development agreements for the developers that gives them the ability to assign their interest and obligations. It's always subject to the city council's approval, which cannot unreasonably be withheld. And so that's really the framework as we consider this assignment this evening. Now, ultimately, the reason RDP is asking to assign this for both their, their obligations and also the responsibilities to this, as well as to receive future incentives from the development on this. What they're hoping to do is they, they view it as Pella Entertainment Group that would be comprised of Dr. Luke Ballinger and his associate, his business partner. That's the party that's actually building and will be operating this proposed Smash Park that we have. And so what they're looking to do is really align the development agreement between the entity that is building, constructing and operating the Smash Park and the city of Pella that's providing incentives for this venue. Now, in looking at it, so what we have here is we have what I would view as somewhat of, from the developer's standpoint, a streamlined request. What they're hoping to do is assign their obligations and also their rights to receive financial incentives to construct a Smash Park to the group that's actually building and operating the Smash Park. They feel from their standpoint, it would make sense for the two parties to have a more direct line, contractually speaking, and that's understandable. Where are the negotiations and what is reasonable under the circumstances comes in. And from staff's standpoint, and we spent a considerable amount of time working with developers on this, and we're going to explain this component here. But looking at it from a risk standpoint, we've operated on assignments, we've done it in the past, and this, what we've done with RDP and Prairie Ridge is no different on assignments. We view assignments that from a fundamental standpoint, they should not inherently increase the level of risk for development for the city of Pella. And that's what we strive to on this assignment negotiation that we're considering this evening. And we can state from our standpoint that we don't believe by approving this assignment that we're going to increase the city's risk in the development because one of the conditions in the assignment is that RDP will still be obligated in the event of default for the entire development. There's language in there that specifies that, and we'll point that out later on in the presentation. So I just think that's very, very important. Two things to take away is considering this evening, because developers usually have a standard clause, clause that could give them the right to sign their obligations under the development agreement, subject to city council approval, which cannot unreasonably be withheld. And considering these assignments, we always look at it from a risk standpoint. So in proving and recommending assignments, we usually negotiate with developers. So fundamentally, it does not increase the city's risk. And so those are the parameters on the negotiations that we're going to talk about, sheriff council this evening. So let's go ahead, Mandy, please. Now, if approved, and again, this is just a policy planning session, so feel free to ask me questions on any of this. But we're going to go on a fifty thousand foot overview of what are the obligations of each of the parties. So let's start off with RDP, who is the current developer on this, that's asking to assign their interest and obligations. And let's talk about the Prairie Ridge development as a whole because our agreement is for the entire development, just not the Smash Park. RDP would still be obligated to construct a public infrastructure. Once that infrastructure is completed, they're required to dedicate it and give it to the city of Pella. The cost on the public infrastructure, the latest estimates that I've seen from the development agreement is about one point one million dollars. Now, with that, they've also have a five million dollar tax assessment with a two percent increase for the Smash Park here as well. That's included in the development. But with specifically, that portion of the tax increase would be assigned to the Pella Entertainment Group. So a periodless, actually, that's probably an oversight on our part, I apologize. What RDP, the third bullet point would be responsible for would be to construct the fast casual restaurant by two thousand and twenty-four. Their obligation would be to sign a minimum tax assessment for the fast casual restaurant at two million dollars with the two percent increase. So the three items that we have for our RDP, if we can cross out that second bullet point, would be those three items. The Pella Entertainment Group would be responsible for constructing the Smash Park. They'd have to get the Smash Park constructed by December of two thousand and twenty-two. They're well on their way to meeting those targets. And I know the developers are looking to open up the Smash Park significantly before December of two thousand and twenty-two. They would have to comply with the minimum tax assessment of five million dollars. They've also agreed to a two percent annual increase on the assessment as well. So that's the Pella Entertainment Group. They would also have to operate the Smash Park in accordance with the agreement. Now, if you look at the city's agreement, there's a significant amount of detail included in descriptions of what is the Smash Park Regional Entertainment Center. The drawings and the elevations that you see up on the big board is what's been improved in the development agreement. That's what the developer is obligated to build as far as a color elevation standpoint. There is also specific obligations that they will have to operate the proposed Smash Park as well. So let's go ahead with the city of Pella and talk about our obligations. Our obligations from a financial incentive standpoint for the development is that we would have construction grants up to two million dollars. One would be to the Pella Entertainment Group, and that would be one point five million dollars. And that would be issued a hundred and fifty days after the issuance of the Smash Park Certificate of Occupancy. So when we talk about certificates of occupancy, what that means, Smash Park building's built, has the building inspector issue a certificate of occupancy saying it's certified, it's been built according to city code on it as well. To get to that point, you're going to have to have a street in front of the building for us to issue a certificate of occupancy. us to issue a certificate of occupancy, which means R D P's gonna have to build the one point one million dollar street, building's gonna have to be built, and within a hundred and fifty days of the issue of certificate of occupancy, the construction grant to the Pella Entertainment Group will be one point five million. Very similar terms for the Fast Casual Restaurant, that would be a half million dollars to R D P Holdings within thirty days of the issue of the certificate of occupancy. The reason why that one's thirty as opposed to a hundred and fifty days, just from a financial planning standpoint, the Fast Casual Restaurant, the deadline date for that is December of two thousand and twenty-four, and we had thought that when the city looks at this from a financing standpoint, if we issue debt, it's likely that we're not going to have two bond issues for these two amounts, we'll do one bond issue on it as well, so we'll be in a better position, this will become second to the Fast Casual Restaurant on it, we'll already have the cash on hand on it, so the key thing is that they have to issue a certificate of occupancy on it as well. Now, with that, I just wanna digress just a bit, 'cause it's not up on the big board, but if the city were to issue debt on this, please keep in mind that the seven million dollars minimum tax assessments, if you do the math on that, and we had that detail in the council packet, we actually hired a financial advisor to look at the minimum tax assessments, and then also calculate, you know, also the guaranteed two percent minimum tax increases. We believe that we can issue a bond as the range of two point two million to two point three billion dollars, and those valuations will cover the bond issue cost on that as well. So that's how it ties back to the minimum tax assessment, is the tax assessments or the taxes, the property taxes from this development will be used to pay off the construction grant to the city of Pella. Now, when we look at R D P, if you look at this initially, and keep in mind that originally, the construction grants are going to the Smash Park and also the Fast Casual Restaurant, the developers' whole, and hopefully, will have other entities in this development as well, the incentive to R D P to build other things and other commercial venues in this development is after the city has completely retired its obligations, R D P is eligible from property taxes within that development, as they're received by the city of Pella up to two million dollars in additional tip rebates over the course of a twenty-year urban renewal plan. That's a high-level overview, what we have as well. Also, keep in mind, with the city of Pella's responsibility, before any payments be made to the developers, including construction grants or tax increment financing rebates on it, the developer and also the signees need to be in compliance with the development agreement. So from our standpoint, out of the hooks that we have in it, there needs to be a Smash Park built, needs to be operated as a Smash Park on it as well, if those two conditions are being made over the next twenty years and continue to be made, R D P's eligible for additional tax increment financing rebates on their end. Once again, we wanna say these rebates are funded exclusively from tax increment revenues generated from the development as well, okay? Any questions on the three-party agreement or the assignment before we move on? Okay, let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, one item, if we could, I'm sorry, I got a little ahead of myself, now let me tie it all back together, the reason that we say on the development agreement, when you look at the seven million dollars in minimum tax assessments, and you look at what could happen over twenty years, there's language that talks in a significant portion of the city's development agreement about defaults on it. Developments were very positive and optimistic, with all developments, but the development agreements always have the what-if question, what if there's a default? The obligations with the assignment is, on there is both parties, both Pella Entertainment Group and R D P would be responsible for defaults on it. So from our standpoint, when we look at the original development agreements entered into R D P, R D P is still obligated in the event of defaults, that's the reason why we state that we believe by doing this assignment, that we're not fundamentally increasing the city's risk on the development as well. So from our standpoint, developer has the right to assign it, I think it's a reasonable expectation of the city of Pella that our risk is not increased with the development as well, and that's what we strive to in negotiating with the developer. I would also like to point out that the agreement that we are considering both this evening and during this work session, has been reviewed by the city's legal council, and really, the intent of tonight's discussion is just before there's a formal vote on this item, which is tentatively scheduled for December seventh on this item, we wanted to make sure that we addressed any questions or concerns council may have with the sudden assignment. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation, if you have any questions, the mayor, council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Questions, comments? For me, the key is, the R D P is still responsible if there's any default in property tax payments, we might keep that on the book for any defaults, otherwise, the agreement's the same as we already approved for that, so.
Fundamentally, it's the same agreement?
Yeah. All right, any questions, comments, concerns?
When you talk about the shortfall payments in paragraph four, then it refers back to section eight point one C, is that just the plain real estate tax payments, when they talk about payments now?
Want the shortfall payments, and again, just to give a high-level overview, in all our development agreements, when the city has a direct financial, not a direct, but when the city has a financial interest, there's always a section about shortfall payments on the agreement. Want the shortfall payment, Mandy, if you could go back to this slide over here, please, back up one slide, please, and we'll see if we can tie that with this. Shortfall payments deal with this two million dollars being paid upfront. From our standpoint, we're looking at a bond issue, and we have a developer that's guaranteeing, saying we agree to a seven million dollar minimum assessment. What the shortfall payment in that section of the development agreement says, for any reason, if that payment, that assessment isn't enough to cover the city's debt issue, or the property taxes don't get paid, the developer makes the shortfall payment or the bond issue payment on the debt. And so, the shortfall payment, when we state, when R D P is still obligated on this, both Pella Entertainment Group and R D P through this assignment, would still be obligated for the shortfall payments in the event of a default, and that's the city's main condition on there when we deal with defaults, is that section of the development agreement, so.
So that would only happen if the bond costs or interest rates shot up completely, that our payments would be, I don't, it's hard for me to figure out where a shortfall would even occur, if the minimum assessment calculates that it shouldn't surface the bond.
Could be a variety of things, it could be the scenario that you talked about, could be interest rates go crazy, that our payments are a lot higher than what we have on it.
So be more on our end.
Yeah, that's, we don't think that's the case, I don't, we think we've got that covered, that was factored in our financial analysis for DA Davidson, could be that property taxes don't get paid out there. The key thing is, is the city has contingencies in the event with the developers, so the developer still has obligations, and so when we talk about assignments, one of the key ones that we have is that shortfall section, we wanna make sure that we have parties, multiple parties still obligated for that section, which we feel we've got covered with this assignment. So, but these, that's very good question, so realistically, it could happen, financial projections come in, bond issue costs are a little bit higher than what we thought they would be, there's a shortfall, the valuations don't, we have the ability to cover it, there's also a case in the event of a default, property taxes don't get paid on it, that would also trigger it as well. That would be just a temporary issue, my guess, is property taxes at some point in time would be paid on the development, but there might be a shortfall period during that period of time that we could exercise that clause in the development.
I think in this scenario, with the two million coming after the debt is paid, if there's default on the property tax payment, that's the one, you know, could cause an issue, and they, R D P would be responsible to make that up, but as far as the bond cost and the interest rates, if, before they issue the bond, once we issue the bond, you'll have the interest rate locked in, but if it went up, it would come out, end up coming out of the, it'd take longer to pay the, it'd take longer to pay the bond off if the interest rate ended up being higher than what was projected. So, the two million that comes later doesn't happen until the bond is paid off, so the shortfall, if that were the case, which the minimum assessment didn't pay it, I don't remember what the, it was like eleven years, wasn't it, the projected payout on the bond?
Right.
So potentially, if the interest rate was higher and it was paid fifteen years, then there's only five years of rebate for that two million, so it'd come out of there at the end.
I was referring, Mayor, that's a very good point, we feel comfortable with our financial projections, it was just not done with staff, we actually hired a financial advisor, if you recall, Michael Maloney from DA Davidson, and looked at two scenarios, one was, and they're relatively conservative, both of them, one was, there's only two buildings that could build in this development, Smash Park and the Fast Casual Restaurant, under that scenario, Michael felt that this minimum tax assessments would cover the city's bond cost on it, and then we also had one additional building on it as well, projecting on tip payments, so we felt very comfortable. The answer, I also wanna make clear, when we talk about shortfall payments, it's not the overall bond, and whether it takes eleven or fifteen years, but on an annual basis, if those costs are higher than what we projected or the don't, we also have the ability to exercise that shortfall payment on the T and I payment, if we need necessarily, we don't think that's likely, but that ability stays with the city, and so that's a very important condition, shortfall in general.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll move on to item three.
All right, Mr. Mayor, what we have this evening is a policy, and also ordinance to talk about small cell antennas. Now, for purposes of small cell antennas, is important to note, under our proposed ordinance, as well as policy for this, what we're really talking about is cell towers on there, and the picture that you have up here on the big board is a picture of a cell tower intended for a small wireless facility that we have here, and this would be the type of pole that we would have, and our policy that we would say would be allowable in the city of Pella. A little bit of background on this is, small cell antennas are necessary to actually provide, help the cell phone providers to provide five G wireless coverage within the city, we've had providers that have been interested in providing five G services to the city of Pella, the problem is, is that they need to construct multiple towers within the city, within the city to do that on here. Now, in looking at, considering small cell wireless facilities, it's very important to understand that this ties back to some federal legislation, that's really somewhat limited cities on the regulation of small cell antennas that we're talking about this evening. So tonight's discussion on the proposed policy that we've had, and also our ordinance that we had, our planning and zoning staff have spent a considerable amount of time in looking at both these issues, but also keep in mind that there has been both the federal legislation that has somewhat limited as far as permitting the cell towers in your community. And in essence, when, just to kind of summarize, and Jerry helped me out if I'm wrong, but to summarize with the federal legislation, if a cell tower provider wants to construct a small wireless facility, antenna in your community, place it in the public right of way, they can, and that's, in essence, with if the city has certain things and parameters that we permit them, but we have to be reasonable under the circumstances, so ultimately, keep this in mind, that if someone wants to come in and build a small cell wireless facility in the city's right of way, they can do it, but they have to follow our ordinance, pre-established ordinance, and also a policy that we've had, and we spend a lot of time on this issue. And so, ultimately, what we're looking at is small cell wireless facilities, and this is being needed by providers to provide five G wireless service. Now, just as a general rule of thumb, we've heard through this, and the distances may be a little bit greater than what I'm about ready to say, but generally, to provide five G, the antennas generally need to be within three to four hundred feet of each other as well, so if you look at five G throughout your community, there'd be a lot of small cell antenna policies that we would have. Providers that we're talking to are interested in segments of town, not the entire town, providing five G service on, so please keep that in mind as well. And also, when you talk about existing streetlights as well, under the current federal legislation, that allows providers to place antennas on light poles, on existing streetlights if you have to get, but it has to be within reasonable policy limits, and we'll dive into this very shortly. So, key takeaway is, this is an item that's been cleared or approved by the federal legislation, it somewhat limits the city's ability to permit these items, the small cell wireless facilities in the city's right of way, and also, there's very specific guidelines that you can to address for light poles as well and antennas. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as an overview, we have two pieces of items that we're talking about, we're talking about an ordinance, which is the law for small cell providers, that ordinance is gonna directly interchange back to our policy. The policy is really geared towards what types of poles we would allow in our community, and what the design of those poles would be, and it also talks about the mechanisms that we would have, we contacted the city to arrange things, and the process that we would go through to do this. Now, it's important to note that as far as providers, so if someone wanted to come in and place a five G antenna or small cell wireless facility on our poles, they would be responsible for removing or replacing existing streetlights within the poles, so if they wanted to go in the location of the existing streetlight, it would be their obligation to remove that pole under the overview of our electric department, replace the pole with the new antenna that you see right up here that we would have on that pole, and then there'd be a brace, an upper pole for the streetlight that would be back in its place, but the new pole would have an antenna on top of the existing streetlight. The overall, what we strive with the policy is, construction of these new poles, whether they're replacing them in the existing streetlight or a new pole, we want it to look like the existing poles that are already in our community, so we don't have something that sticks out within our community, that's the overall, what we're striving for with this policy. It's important to note that these antennas cannot be located on traffic poles, and they cannot be located next to or adjacent to municipal park or residential areas unless approved by the Pella City Council on it as well, so providers on this, there's oversight by the Pella City Council on new poles being placed within our community as well. Very important to note, one of the key takeaways, specifically, when you talk about the city's downtown, is the aesthetics of the pole, pole that we're showing here, that's what we're saying is an allowable pole within the community, they have to be in accordance with our graphic policy that we're covering this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as spacing, we do have the spacing requirements, and again, you have the pole height on it, planning and zoning would be responsible for receiving the command and actually overseeing the process that we have, and we do have the fees that they would have on this, and again, these are in accordance with federal legislation, so we're somewhat limited on how much you can charge for permitting on it, but overall, the grand scheme of things, what we're interested in is, if someone wants to place a five G pole in our community, we don't want it to stick out, we want it to blend in with existing poles in here, so hopefully, the goal would be, is you can't tell the difference between the small cell wireless antenna and then a regular city's streetlight, that's the goal on it. With the legislation that we have, we think we've got a good policy framework, both from our policy and the ordinance, but overall, the goal is, we want these poles to blend in with existing streetlights, and that's kind of the high-level overview with it, and Mandy, is there any additional slides?
One more.
Okay, all right, I think we've covered most of this right here, but again, the one pole that we have that says is an allowable pole, which you see up on the big board up here as well, so again, this would be, hopefully, what we would be a fairly discreet pole, that would have the antenna on top, but again, that could also be a pole that would be used for a new streetlight as well. And just to answer the question from our electric department, if someone wanted to place one of these antennas on the existing streetlight, we don't think the loading for the new antenna, our poles would tolerate that, so from a high level, it'd be like, if they wanted to go in the existing streetlight, they'd have to replace the streetlight. Now, Jerry, you've worked a lot on this, this policy, I'm sure, I gave just the reader's digest, is there anything I missed or anything else that council should consider, consider on a high level as it is this policy and ordinance?
The, again, the ordinance is the law, the design guidelines are what we would, are voluntary, and they're meant to work with the cell, the cell providers to provide what the city believes is the best fit. Now, again, state law and the S E C rules dictate we can't preclude them, so they know they have to come here, but we can guide them, so the intent is to work voluntarily with the cell providers, providers, and put up designs like this, this is what we would like to see, and work to get them to do what our vision is. That pole you see up there on the right, that is what is a current technology, that's pulled from Oklahoma City, so it's brand-new technology, not even constructed in Oklahoma City, I was just approved, but that would be a solid, a pole like we would have, it is designed to have banner attachments, so we can It is designed to have banner attachments, so we could put the downtown banners on the poles. It's also designed to have a mast arm, so it could be placed in the existing streetlight with an LED mast arm. And then, one additional thing we're asking is that midpoint antenna, it has exposed wires, and our policy would require that to be shrouded, so it wouldn't have exposed wires, and birds could build nests in there, et cetera. So, that is basically what you see with the additional shrouding. So, that's how the policy is laid out.
Jerry, do you foresee more than one company wanting to put 5G?
Yes.
Is there any way that we can be an advocate for not having each company putting a pole up, but that they, that we can kind of, I don't want to say use the word fours, but that they're, they need to use existing pole placement rather than putting all their own new poles up?
Well, that is a great question, and it has an interesting answer. If we had, in Mid-America, we still have a utility company outside the city, and we had a utility company or IOU poles, they do joint pole agreements where they make the companies co-locate on those poles. Right now, what we have is, to blend them into our community, we would use existing city of Pella municipal streetlight poles. So, who came first would then remove that pole at a cost and put this new pole in place? Most likely, USL, Verizon, AT&amp;T would not allow a competitor to co-locate on their own poles. So, that's why we then have a spacing requirement, where we must make them move at least three hundred, five hundred feet down the road before they put another pole in. Some companies may put their 5G on the larger towers out toward the war lane. We have applications in for that, too, so we might not necessarily get 5G downtown by all the providers.
So, there really is no recourse for us where we, other than that, we strongly suggest that they would share poles, otherwise, we as municipality really have no recourse, but to allow them to double or triple cover with these poles, I mean, we're going to look like a porcupine if they're going to have a ton of four hundred feet.
The intent is why, is to take existing streetlight poles and use that vision that we have, they're, kind of limits our existing streetlight poles and turn us into 5G. So, we wouldn't have streetlight pole 5G, streetlight pole 5G. We would make them pull out a streetlight, an existing streetlight, and just replace that pole. And then, do that, so we would have a, we wouldn't have a massive amount of poles, plus we have a spacing requirement, so we wouldn't have the porcupine look.
But Jerry, I mean, we're still, let's, if we replace light poles, I mean, and another company comes in, they're going to replace light poles, too, so basically, we have most every light pole that potentially, because I, I'm looking, I'm thinking, they're not much more than three, four hundred feet apart right now, if you get to the main corridors going out of town.
You could potentially see that, yes.
Okay. I would urge us to somehow see if we can address that.
I would think, too, just to preface, tonight's not voting on the policy tonight. We want to take out of concerns, and I think, Jerry, let's take that one down, and we'll talk on legal counsel on it as well.
Just a suggestion.
Sure, you bet.
Who's the technical owner of the pole if it's replaced by another company?
Should still be.
Well, technically, if, depends on what, if the department wants to take that as an asset or not, the utility department. Right now, typically, they're, it's going to have its own meter at the base, so it'll be built from wire, it'll be built for power, so we get the revenue from that. It's not necessarily, it can be either or. We haven't got that far yet as to who will actually own the pole, but most likely, it's a USL or asset, or it can be needed back to the city.
Yeah, most likely, my initial reaction, they're going to be our poles back.
So, would, should that be in the ordinance? Is that, again, our call to what we do?
Yes.
And then, just like when they develop those streets and they dedicate it to the city, would there have to be that dedication action, so to speak, that they met all the requirements that we have?
Correct, yes. We'd have to assume ownership of the poles. That's something, you know, from a staff standpoint, I think we just naturally assumed it's going to be our pole coming back if, if you're replacing an existing streetlight. Now, if they're going out and putting a new pole in and not on a streetlight, that's their pole, but if you're coming in with something with a streetlight, that's going to be something that we've just assumed. But that's a good question, and we'll make sure that we get a clarification on it.
So, that would be ours to maintain, maintain then, too?
That would be part of the agreement, as far as the dedication that's back, so, from the streetlight component.
So, so if you had a pole with a streetlight on it, our, it's our streetlight, it's their pole. You said they were going to pay for electricity for the?
For the antennas.
So, you'd have to somehow, somehow separate that?
Right, the bottom of the pole is, the base cabinet has a meter socket in it that would?
And then, if somebody veers off the road and knocks one down, I think that's what Bruce is getting at, my question, too, if somebody veers off the road and knocks it down, and it has to be replaced?
It's replaced by the USL.
They would be, but if, if it's our pole, if it's our pole, then what, we have to replace? So, I think, I think that's a consideration, who's going to actually own the pole, because if one of them has to be replaced, we need to know that.
And does the city only own it up to the light?
Yeah.
Well, I remember painting a lot of light poles here not too long ago.
So, anyway, I think those are all.
Just think, consider.
Questions, answer. I'm sure this is going on in a lot of communities, so, yes, there should be some kind of standard agreements, I'm sure, to answer most of these questions.
Obviously, that industry had a good lobbying arm in Congress.
I like the fee, I like the fees. Two hundred and seventy dollars per pole per year. That's nice revenue stream, if you get a few poles, as long as they look decent.
And presumably, for the actual internet service, too.
Yeah.
Part of the modern world.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Okay, move on.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, we have an item this evening, the Highway 163 Monument, the signage ordinance, and this is really a report back from P and Z, and what we're hoping to do is get guidance and feedback from the city council, make sure we're on the same page before we start on potentially voting on any sign code amendments. But as council is aware, that recently, we did have a discussion at policy and planning concerning the request that we did receive by Layley North American. As council is aware, they're in the process of constructing their corporate headquarters. That corporate headquarters is located just southwest of, exit forty-four off of Highway 163 interchange on it, and specifically, the sign that Layley was proposing is the sign right here that they'd like to be able to construct for their new building. So, elevation of the new building with the sign would be up here, as shown on the slide. The proposed sign that they had is roughly two hundred and twelve square feet under there. Now, under the city's, under the city's sign code, what we would have is a freestanding ground sign, the maximum square footage would be forty-five square feet. If it is internally lit, which of the sign would be at twenty-two, twenty-five square feet. So, the city council directed the planning and zoning commission to review this item. Now, what we have is the P and Z's preliminary recommendation. In coming to this recommendation that we're considering this evening, P and Z did review sign codes from several jurisdictions that do allow freeway signs to be in the hundred-plus square foot range, and as a result of that, in looking at kind of like communities that butt Interstate eighty on there primarily is what we, what they looked at, they feel an ordinance amendment is justified. Now, specifically, the ordinance amendment, we did include it in the pack, it has lots of details, and I'm sure Jerry can be happy to answer for you on that. But the Ohio level overview is, an ordinance amendment would allow freestanding ground signs facing the freeway up to two hundred square feet, up to ten feet tall, and limited to one per parcel. Now, there are some zoning classifications that we have, Jerry, industrial zoning and also commercial zoning parcels would be eligible for this as well. So, again, you'd have to butt on Highway 163 in order to be able to construct a sign like this that we have right here. And ultimately, Mr. Mayor, before this ordinance is presented for formal consideration at planning and zoning or at the city council, tonight's discussion, we want to make sure we answer any questions the council may have on this item. And again, it's just trying to address any questions or concerns before formal consideration of the ordinance. So, we'd be more than happy to receive the input of the city council on this item.
Okay.
Was this looked at in a work session at P and Z or on?
Yes.
Controversial or lots of varied opinions, or what was the?
Jerry.
We've had two work sessions, we're going to have a third next week. The, the biggest, well, actually, not many concerns, I'm worried about some of the change, it's basically change is what everybody's worried about. Sorry, this inside ordinance has been in place for many, many, many years, and this is a big change. And, you know, the reality is that, just a humorous side point, is one of the conditions that the commission thought would be nice is during the Christmas holidays, the freeway signs could be lit with Christmas colors. That was just a suggestion. Unfortunately, it was determined by the city attorney that infringes upon the constitutional right, and we can't record that. But nothing out of the ordinary that was controversial. They, the ordinance is designed, if you read the ordinance, it's very strict on the construction method of the signs, the aesthetic value of the signs, of the structure. We don't do any content control, we can't, and the sizing is basically a formula of the frontage of the property on 163, you get a factor, and so, it's very simplistic. So, we can change that factor, depending on if the council or commission wants to modify the allowable sizes, but the design standards are separate, so it makes it easy to work and play with that.
Jerry, also, you had a work session at P and Z, did CDC also review this item as well?
Correct, the CDC ordinance was before the CDC, and they were all in favor of it, the entire commission.
So, this, would this be on both sides of 163?
Correct, any property that touches 163 or an offering. And only 163, it doesn't go down to Washington or any other surface street, just the freeway.
And Jerry, what is the zoning districts, though, that you'd have to be?
M1, M2, commercial, institutional, it does not, and community and commercial, it does not, it's not applicable to ag or residential.
I just think I'm going to just pop my head, let's take like Long Roosevelt Road there. Some of those properties are against Ley Wang, against 163.
Correct.
So, that would be applicable to those properties, too, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that was my question, or that was what I was thinking, too. There are spots on, I'll say, the inside of the highway, city side of the highway, that might not be so good for something like this.
They would, you know, any parcel that butts the freeway, it would be allowed. We do have a spacing requirement in there, because one thing we don't want is parcels, say we have fifty-foot parcels that happen to hit the freeway. We don't, but if they did, we wouldn't want to have a sign every fifty feet, so we've restricted it to three hundred feet, and it would allow adjacent properties to co-locate on a sign, so they'd share one sign, and we'd go, every football field away would be another possible sign.
So, the two hundred square foot, ten foot tall per parcel, so no matter the size of the parcel?
No, that would be for a Layley-sized parcel, so something near thirteen hundred linear feet. When you get down to a small parcel, it drops down to sixty square feet.
Yeah, their sign was two hundred and twelve square feet, though.
That's the maximum it could be.
The two hundred.
Yeah, there's a formula, Jerry, that you have in your ordinance, it's point two square feet for every linear foot of highway frontage on the parcel.
So, that would eliminate a lot of the, bigger signs on the ins, because there aren't, there aren't, there aren't parcels that big.
Yeah, those Roosevelt are about ten hundred foot.
Probably makes sense. If CDC blasted, we're way ahead of the ballgame. Anything else?
I always liked that Layley sign, the way it was presented way back, that you considered it's going to be good for that.
Okay. Last thing?
Yes, item number five.
All righty, last item tonight, and what we have here is reprecincting, and Mandy may have to help me out on this, but basically, this is predicated based off the 2020 preliminary census results. Now, as council is aware, overall, we had a population increase of a hundred and twelve residents within our community. And listed up on the big board is the current ward district based off the 2010 population. And as you can see, what we have here is a comparison to the 2020 population. But ultimately, what we're striving to do is have an equal number of residents in each ward. So, the suggestions that we have tonight are based off of the 2020 census, of having two thousand six hundred and sixteen residents in each ward as close as what we possibly can, that's the goal, what we're working on tonight with it. So, I believe Mandy's date law allows allowable variations up to ten percent, is that correct?
Yes.
So, what we've come up with on this, from the repreciting that we have right here, is, after this is done, you can see what the wards would be here. Now, as far as the variation from the 2016, as you can see, we do have some little variances on it, but overall, they're relatively close on what we have. And so, Mandy, let's go ahead, make one of the districts that we have. From Ward Three, we do have a section off Washington Drive that will be transferred to Ward Four. We have another section from Ward Three over here off Franklin Street, that's the red highlighted area, that will be transferred from Ward Four. And then, we also have a final section from Ward Three up here that will be transferred to Ward One in this highlighted area here. In addition, that we have a transfer from Ward Three to Ward Two up here as well. So, again, some slight modifications, but the ultimate goal with this exercise is to make the districts or the wards as closely equal in population representation as possible. Now, Mandy, that was a very brief presentation. I know I've missed probably some items, if you could fill in the details, I would appreciate it.
Sure, yep, Lee Ross, our GIS person and myself, has spent a lot of time massaging the census blocks to get these numbers as close together as possible, and that is what resulted in those eleven block changes. From a timeline standpoint, we are on a tight timeline, because we have sixty days from when it went into law at the state level to get this new ordinance passed. So, that's why we're bringing it before you today, is we need to then formally consider it December seventh, and if there's any concerns, that'll give us some time to work on those boundaries if needed.
I can't believe you got them that tight.
Yeah, it was quite the exercise, because then, once you take one out and move it, it adjusts a lot, yeah.
Yeah, that's amazing, now, of course, you got them all.
What happened in Ward Three, where everybody liked to move to?
What happened in four?
Are you worried on our ward?
Yes, I'm a little concerned.
Was that before or after you moved in?
That was, that happened after I moved in, so. Draw your own conclusions, I guess.
Whatever works. Yeah, I was going to say, that's pretty, pretty equitable way you did it, I don't know why you could do it better than that. Okay, any issues, problems, concerns? All right, so now, we're, we have a couple closed sessions to go into, so we probably won't have any motions coming out of those, so unless somebody wants to sit and wait, we'll just do it in here, so that means all of you have to exit.